I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. You have the minutes. We're in your packets. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? I've got a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Have no public hearings. Election of officers is in order. Floor is open for nominations. We will be electing a chairman, vice chairman, and a secretary.
Make a motion ahead, Stuckey, chairman.
Circuit that motion.
Do we have any other nomination for chairman?
Make a motion unless it cease.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Those opposed? Vice chair.
Nominate David Caldwell.
Second.
All right. Move the nomination cease.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. David, I guess I'll have to give you the gavel a couple of times next year. Nomination for secretary.
Right now, we have two, Doug and myself, so we split the points.
Do y'all want to resign? Do y'all resigning or anything? Okay, I'll make a motion, both of them.
Okay, and we have a second. Commissioner French. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Doug and John, for documenting our Ann Marley. Okay, site plan. Roger.
The site plan's for Farm Credit Branch Office that will be located on property identified on Tax Map 56, parcel 34. The property is Zone C Commercial and is located at the entrance of Partnership South Industrial Park. The site plan does reflect that this development will be in compliance with our regulations. All building setbacks will be met. Buffering for this site will not be required, but they should submit a landscape plan for this site. Oh, they have submitted a landscape plan for the site. Parking will be addressed by 28 lots, and this is within the acceptable range for this type of use in accordance to our regulations. The applicant has submitted a complete erosion and drainage plan that does appear to meet our requirements. A grading permit and a SWIP will be required prior to the start of construction. Our stormwater administrator will do a complete review at the time a grading permit is issued. The elevations of the building do meet the design requirements in Section 17.15. The photometrics show that there will be no off-site spillover from the lighting of this site according to the luminary schedule. It does appear that our lighting standards will be achieved by this engineered plan. This site is currently in the process of being annexed into the city of Maryville. Maryville staff has reviewed at this time, and that's what I've handed out to you guys, the site plan. At this point, it's to my knowledge that they're not going to pursue start of construction prior to the annexation. So at that point, it would be in the hands of the city for all the permitting. They're buying about a four-acre tract of this that does have a preliminary plat approval, but they're waiting for something with the sewer to be rectified before that process is complete and the annexation process has begun, to the best of my knowledge. So that's all I know the report on that.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner French.
Roger, are we supposed to take any action on this, or is this just for our information? If the city's going to annex it, it's going to be up to the city for everything, isn't it? I mean, what are we?
They've submitted this to get a site plan approved, which would require action, but you're correct. If it's annexed prior to the beginning of construction, then it's going to go through this same process with the city.
Did you not say that they're not going to start construction until after it's annexed?
That's what I've been, yeah, that's what I've been told by the city. And are you guys here with? They may be able to answer the question better. This is representing the applicant.
My name's Doug Ernst. I'm the civil engineer for Farm Credit Mid-America. I prepared the site plans you reviewed. The reason we're here is the concern that we have now, after submitting the plans to the city of Maryville for their review, is more of a timing issue. We're concerned that we're going to be ready for construction now, prior to them being ready to annex the property. So we would like to get approval today from the county in case we cannot obtain the city approval before we apply for a building permit. We're looking at spring construction, but after we got comments back from the city, it appears we need to go to the Board of Appeals for retaining wall and just a review process going to take longer. So we'd like to maybe cover our basis by having the county sign off on it in case we're not, we're ready for construction prior to annexation being completed.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Not that a motion is in order?
Mr. Chairman.
Given that this is going to be kind of a semi-split jurisdiction type of an issue and that Maryville has given their comments on the site plan, the planning commission can set reasonable conditions on a site plan. I think it might be a reasonable condition that if you approve it according to our regulations, you make it subject to resolution of any issues with the city in their review.
Commissioner French.
Thank you, Mr. French. And Roger, you say they meet all of the requirements of the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Her requirements in the cities are different. So if we approve it and they don't do no construction before they annex, the city is going to make you all do more than what we require, right? That's my understanding.
Yes, the city has stricter requirements than the county does. We anticipate meeting the city requirements anyway. We just need to get them some more information, but we don't have any reason why we won't be meeting the city requirements. That's the plan.
So, John, if we approve it and they start before they get annexed, what you're saying is it should be added in there with what the city would want beyond what we approve?
I was just giving you some information that you can set reasonable conditions on a site plan approval, and given that, you know, this is going between two jurisdictions very quickly depending on the process of annexation and that Maryville has given their comments on the site plan, you could, as a reasonable condition, approve the site plan subject to resolving any issues from the staff memo from the city.
Is that, Roger, is that? Okay. I'll make a motion with that, with what John said, that'll be put in with it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Got a second. Commissioner McCallum.
The issue the city has with retaining wall, that's just the retaining wall around that detention basin, isn't it?
That's correct. I think basically they're treating it as a structure, so we need to go get approval for that separately.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to approve the site plan, subject to the applicant resolving any outstanding issues with the city of Maryville as they proceed with the project.
The one concern I have with that is we cannot apply to go to, for example, for the retaining wall, we cannot apply to go through their Board of Appeals until after we're annexed into the city. If our construction schedule is necessary to go, to begin construction prior to being annexed, then we couldn't, we would be stuck. We wouldn't be able to get county approval because we would not be able to go to the city until after we're annexed.
Is there some way we can state that, that they work?
You can drop that one issue if you'd like as part of the condition. If that's a timing issue and there is another body that has to rule on that, it meets our regulations. I don't know that it's really that criticable an issue. You can resolve that later on through informal channels if you have to, let's put it that way. And if you haven't started construction on it by that time, if that's not the first thing you start construction on, they'll probably ask you to come in and get approval.
With the exception, excepting the retaining wall and the permitting process. Is that okay with a second? All right, so Commissioner.
But you've submitted structural drawings to the city for the wall?
We have not prepared those yet. When we saw the comments, we now have an engineer working on those, and so we will be preparing those shortly.
Okay, so the motion is, Commissioner French?
Do you anticipate starting construction before the city annexes you?
We don't think we will.
You don't think you're going to start construction before annexation?
No, but we've never been through the annexation process, so we don't know how long it's going to have taken, and we're concerned if something comes up that slows us down and we miss the start of the construction season. I believe we'll be okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the site plan to county standards, and we are asking the applicant to resolve outstanding issues, recognizing that the permitting process of the retaining wall cannot be completed until annexation is complete. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Preliminary plats. Doug?
Yes, sir. Item B1. I have the renewal of preliminary plat for lots five through seven, Ambern Builders LLC Property off of Peach Orchard Road by Ambern Builders LLC. There are three lots to be served by a 25-foot common driveway easement and a remainder that is actually greater than five acres. This plat was originally approved in August of 2008 as a four-lot common driveway development. It has expired in 2010. This is either a renewal or just an all-new preliminary plat request. I listed it as renewal. If you will look at page number four, the bottom of the page are the outstanding items to be completed, and I'm going to list them again. We did have a pre-construction meeting with the developer about 2009, but it's kind of went by the wayside. We've met with him recently again, but I'm going to leave this in the staff recommendation. Number one, a pre-construction meeting prior to any additional onsite work. All required permits to staff. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveway, paving of entrance, and construction of all utility improvements. Number two, I have a note on here, I'm not sure if it's still accurate, surveyor to tie the property to the nearest intersection.
It's on the plat.
I can barely see it. That must be the updated one. I didn't have it at the time I had written that. Number three, supply copy of the maintenance agreement to staff for review. I would like to make one additional note. It's more of a comment than anything, but a common driveway development is typically considered a major subdivision because of the construction of the driveway. Minor subdivisions are typically four lots or less. This is kind of in that gray area, is this a major or a minor plat? The reason I bring that up is because of the fact that minor plats don't require all certifications from utilities. In this case, the developer is required to put in the utilities, that being the water and electric to the lots, or posting a bond or surety for their completion to the utility provider. The previous plat was signed by the electric company at the time. They didn't get final plat, they didn't build the driveway, but they went and got signatures. Utility company signed the plat, Alcoa did, that no provisions had been made for electric. And I just want to make it clear that, my understanding, this is a major plat since the electric infrastructure is required, so the developer will be responsible for either making arrangements with Alcoa Utility to put that electric in or to actually physically put it in the ground and that the plat be signed in the affirmative that that has been taken care of. I have explained this to the developer, and he seems to understand it, agrees with it.
Okay, so that has to be added to the outstanding items?
If Marlene could add that as just a note, that the electric will sign the plat in the affirmative, that provisions will be made for electric.
That's just the final, not the plan.
Yes.
Commissioner McCallum?
Do we know what the Ambern Builders' intentions is for the remainder of five acres?
Well, there's actually two remaining lands. You'll see it on either side.
One of them, I looked at tax map today, that's only 1.7 acres of that five acres.
I'm not sure which one you're talking about. It's actually been split again. The land to the south that says remaining lands of Ambern Builders, you actually have a preliminary plat that is active for a three-lot subdivision or four-lot subdivision on that side.
Yeah, but it's five acres on the right side of Zach's lane, it's only 1.7 acres. It's part of that five, or part of that remainder. I looked at a tax map today, that's not five acres on that side of Zach's lane.
I'm not understanding.
Because he did that little hook there.
This tract here, this tract here actually comes down and goes out here, and there's five acres, and then there's another tract that comes here, and they've re-divided it as well.
I understand. On the right side of the lane there, he's only got 1.7 acres of.
It actually hooks around to the back here, and it's over five acres.
It's still connected.
I know it's connected, but what's his intentions for that 1.7? Is he going to cut it off and subdivide it to lots?
He may do something in the future. He hasn't indicated what his intentions are. It's kind of a low area, and he understands if you'd have to build a driveway through here to get to this back part, and the better lot would be up here on the hill. He knows it's fairly limited. That's why he's not doing it now. He wants to develop these lots, build these houses, do the other one that he has preliminary plat on, then come back and maybe someone, one of these other people, once they buy one of these houses, will buy that from him if he realizes it doesn't have a lot of development potential. That's my understanding. Is it yours, Ron?
Any other questions or comments?
No. There is now. There's a preliminary that comes like this, but this still goes back here.
Got a motion and a second? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Ready.
Lots six through nine, Laurel Valley subdivision.
Item C1, preliminary and final plats, major subdivisions. Lot six through nine, Laurel Valley subdivision off of Laurel Road in Laurel Valley by Laurel Valley Conservation LLC. There are four lots, there are three lots with road frontage along private roads in Laurel Valley, and one is served by a 25-foot easement off of a private road in Laurel Valley. I'll just go through this one more time. Preliminary, I mean, a minor plat is typically four lots or less. Major plat is five or more. There's four lots here, six, seven, eight, and nine, but I have it listed as a major plat, and the reason I've done that is because this is actually phase two of the Laurel Valley subdivision, which you saw last month. Lots one through five came in as a major plat, and this is basically phase two. If you look at the index sheet that Marlene spent a lot of time putting together, she has shown you where all of the lots are and highlighted them in yellow around and about the golf course. None of the tracts, or none of the new lots are in the R2 zone. They're all in the R1 zone, which allows for their smaller size. I don't believe any of these lots are over an acre, but they look like it because all of them have easements outside of a lot area for septic. And we've gone over that last month with lots one through five, and the planning commission approved, I believe, four, three or, was it three of the five lots with easements, I believe, last time? The outstanding items to be completed are on page six, and I just want to read them into the record. Note number one, that a note be added to each plat that all driveways and home construction must utilize erosion control measures on all exterior boundaries during and after construction until the individual lots have been re-vegetated. And the reason we did that last time is because all these lots are part of the golf course now, and any construction that is not controlled on site would interfere with the function of the golf course perhaps. And I believe I spoke to Justin about having them make sure that occurs during the building process. Number two, it's the signature plats and a $40 per-lot plating fee. And that's all I have.
Commissioner McCallum?
I'll say it again, on lot eight, I still would like to see some kind of tie to that, something up at the road.
I should have wrote that down. I did talk to Ricky about that. He said he'd get a tie in there for you. Do you want to add that, Marlene?
We need a tie on lot eight. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm going to voice the same thing I did at last month's meeting on the lots that, I just think it's a little, goes against the norm. It's a little odd that we're creating lots with septic systems that aren't part of that lot. To me, that's, it's a strange situation. I think in the future, we're going to run into problems if we continue to do this. I voted against it last month because I don't think it's a good practice. I think eventually, if we continue to do this, I'm looking toward the future, if we continue to do this, I think we're going to cause problems. I just, I think that septic areas ought to be part of the lots if we approve them. That's just my personal opinion, and again, I'm going to vote against this like I did last month. I think it's just, we're creating some problems. While I understand if we vote of existing houses, I understand we can't expect them to tear those houses down or to go out and have to purchase another piece of property to do that. I just feel like we're creating problems when we do this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to bring up one other thing, and then maybe consult John really quick. Did you want to mention anything about the homeowners association, any lots in Laurel Valley? Would they be tied in with the homeowners association in Laurel Valley, just like before?
Yeah, there's been some issue about the participation of these lots in the Laurel Valley Property Owners Association. They will definitely need to be responsible jointly for maintenance of the road, but there's been some issues as to whether these lots are then subject to all the restrictions of Laurel Valley proper, and that's being resolved right now. I think the biggest issue is that they need to be responsible jointly for the maintenance of the private road. So if you make that one of the explicit conditions of plat approval, I think that would be appropriate and let them figure out how to resolve the issue of all the other restrictions.
Good. So that lot owners should be responsible for the maintenance of the private driveways? Is that what you're saying?
The private road. Laurel Valley roads are private roads, and any lot that we create off of that should share in the maintenance of that road. Beyond that, I don't know that they need to be part of the main restrictions of Laurel Valley. I mean, they are not part of it now, and I don't know that we can force the issue of them being part of the total restrictions. Our main concern, and really our only concern, is that they share in the maintenance, and if we can make that as a...
Of the private roads.
Yeah, of the private road system in Laurel Valley, yes.
Understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did approve five lots similar to this last month, and we didn't put that restriction on it.
Yes, we did.
On the road?
Yes, we did, on the road. And then the homeowners association came back and said, you know, the owner agreed, there's notes on the plat that the owners, for the future lot owners, the current owners agreed that they would pay for maintenance of the road. The homeowners association came back after the meeting and added some more conditions. Like John stated, we agree that the roads need to be maintained by all new lots, but the rest they need to work out amongst themselves. The owners I've had a conversation with of the golf course said they don't necessarily have a problem with that once they've started thinking about it, but they also brought up the fact that there might be some other documentation out there. I don't want to confuse the issue too much, but that may state that the golf course doesn't have any other maintenance responsibility because it's the reason people come to Laurel Valley. If that becomes the case, I'll bring it back to the planning commission and explain that before they get any final plats, because I don't want to muddy the water anymore.
Well, since we already muddied the water, the exemption of the golf course is not exemption of new houses. These houses are not golf courses anymore. They are residential structures, and they should be responsible jointly for maintenance of the private road.
Commissioner McCallum?
As far as you know, are any of these septic areas in the fairways and stuff? Is that where they are?
I don't know how you define fairways, but yeah, I believe you're right.
In the golfing areas?
Yes, some are in the green space of the golf course where balls could be hit and so forth, yes.
I don't think it did that's going to run a septic field.
I sort of agree with Commissioner French on the separating of the property, but only on the aspect that's 10 feet enough. If someone purchases a lot and they've got 10 feet to get to their septic system to work on it, is that enough space to get a machine in and to properly maintenance that without disturbing other property?
Well, most, our minimum road standard for a large development in one county is an 18-foot wide road, so those are nine-foot lanes, and all traffic moves on nine-foot lanes, so 10-foot is probably adequate to move a backhoe in or something like that.
I wanted to ask a question on these septic areas. Is there any concern of how far away? I see that's 245 feet. Is there, I just want to...
It's not as...
Is there a point where it doesn't make sense, I should say?
Oh, there probably is from a cost standpoint. Gary Ferguson has reviewed all of these. He's had conversations with the owner and with the surveyor.
Distance is not a problem.
Yeah, they can pump it, it's just a matter... Yeah, they can pump it, it's just a matter of cost.
It's, the only thing that is going to the field is liquid. It's water to be absorbed into the ground. So you don't have it, you're not transporting solids, so it's, it's nothing much more than running a water line. Commissioner Kaylin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regard to Commissioner French's remarks, have we ever done that before, done this before in regard to having a septic area prior to last one?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And, I understand your concern with this. It was a concern of staff also when we first saw it, and it was a concern with some other developments that had come through in the past. We found that we don't have authority to force the issue. If you think it is appropriate to set the standard that all septic will be taken care of on the lot itself, we can write that into the regulations, but that will take an amendment of the subdivision regulations, and we can come back with a proposal probably in January or February, something like that, and let you consider that. If that's the way you want to go, then you would have a variance process if there was a hardship created with that. In other words, you can set the standard and not have a silent standard.
Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you go along with what we're basically doing, this, if we did that, then this would be the variance, would be the rest of the... Yes.
Let me get Commissioner Kirby first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. French is right that it's going to come up again, but where it's going to come up is, is when somebody inherits property with four or five people involved, and they've got to split these properties up, and the septic field for this piece of property is going to be somewhere else, not on that piece of property. So it's going to come up again, and it's already been approved, a whole lot in the past of what we're looking at here tonight, you know? And all these places are designated and marked, and marked by the Ferguson, and so I don't see how we can say, hey, you ain't going to get it, and then next week one comes in or next month, that we've got to look at because it's already there and say, no, you can't do that because this is the way we did, you know? So in my opinion, I think we need to just keep on going the way we're headed and keep it like it is without putting all these restrictions and stuff, because we're going to hurt people down the road that inherit its property, not only develop a property, it's going to hurt people.
Commissioner French?
And that, one of my concerns is that, but, and I agree partly with what Mr. Kirby says. The only, I cannot remember since I've been on the commission of doing, I guess they came up before I was placed on the planning commission. But again, I guess the only reason this was done, I guess, was to, because you could reduce the size of the building lots is the only thing I can see the reason for doing. I don't see any other reason. I...
The minimum building lot is...
Pardon me?
The minimum building size of the lot is set by the, is set by the zone. So I mean, there's a minimum lot size. They're not gaining anything with lot size shrinking.
Okay. I still, I just still think it's a bad practice to put a septic field off the piece of property. That's a personal opinion.
There is another case where we've done this a lot, and it's onsite septic systems or, you know, the public utilities for like Winsong subdivision, you know, none of the septic or sewer is on those lots. It's all off-site and at easement. And as long as the documentation is there and it's noted on a plat, we've not had a problem with that in the past.
Do I have a motion? All right, we have a motion to approve with the stated staff recommendations, the additional recommendations which have come up through our discussion, and specifically responsibility for participation and maintenance of the private roads within Laurel Valley. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign?
No.
There was only one no? Okay. Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we had a second. Yeah, we had a... No, that's all right. Thank you, Doug. Have a happy Thanksgiving. John Longreach?
Discussion of commercial zoning alternatives along two-lane arterial roads in the county. We had a brief discussion of this at the last meeting. You'd asked me to come back with some alternatives. I provided you with a memo. It stated the problem, and basically the problem is we're getting more and more requests for commercial uses along these two lanes, two-lane roads. We did have provisions in the past as special exception with limitations to allow commercial uses with some restrictions. Those were taken out because of some controversy along 411 South, which was a four-lane road. We resolved that partially by putting in a rural arterial commercial zone, but that was restricted then to four-lane cross-section only. So now we're faced with a situation where we are getting more and more requests for consideration of commercial uses along two-lane roads. Those type of commercial uses are consistent with our plans. It would be consistent with the past structure of zoning that was approved in 2000. And what I brought back to you is some alternatives. The alternative starts bottom of page one, continue on for a few, couple more pages. Alternative one is to expand the present special exception with limitation list of commercial uses that may be considered in the R2, R1 zone. And we are talking about just the R1 zone here, giving you some alternatives on that. Alternative two is create a new zone that covers two-lane arterial roads that would not be covered by the existing RAC zone, like an RAC light zone or a RAC two zone, specific to two-lane cross-section. Some strategic considerations, need to consider how you're defining low to moderate density or intensity of commercial development. That is a requirement of the 1101 growth plan, and that is actually the only legal requirement that binds you. You do need to limit yourself to low to moderate density development in the rural areas of the county. I've given you some numbers. Those numbers are not set in stone. I think you might need to consider upping the consideration of square footage from 4,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet or some other number. I mean, just 4,000 square feet is basically a large house, and that was some of the thinking in the past, that if you're going to allow commercial uses in the R1 zone, consider the bulk of a large house and set the standard at a large house. You can get larger houses than that if you've got enough money to buy that kind of square footage, but to make commercial uses particularly retail and some service uses viable, you might be, need to think about a larger square footage requirement. There's some inconsistencies I noted in the RAC zone. If you take a one-acre track and the 40% building coverage, that translates into approximately 17,000 square feet of building area. However, we have a maximum, for some reason, of 10,000 square feet in the RAC zone, so there might need to be some consideration of upping that. Another strategic consideration is defining a list of R1 zone commercial uses. You need to think basically about how you've structured in the past and how you want to structure in the future, allowing commercial uses in different situations in the county. We've done it for the RAC zone. I've noted from Roger, discussion with Roger, that we left out some consideration of service types of activities. We had retail, but we kind of, kind of didn't address service activities very well. The C commercial zone might be used as a template to start with and take out those uses that are objectionable. There's also a possibility of having a two-type, a two-stage type of consideration. One would be an RAC light zone, and another would be consideration for adding back in some uses into special exception with specific limitations. So you can have a hybrid. You don't have to have alternative one, alternative two. You can have a hybrid of the two, but you've got to define where those uses are going to fall in a list for each one of those alternatives. So that's going to be a major consideration. I've given you a lot of references about permitted uses from other parts of the zoning regulations. Another strategic consideration is we still get requests for campgrounds. Campgrounds is a commercial use, and it failed in December of last year. It cannot be considered again for one year, so it's going to come up December of this year for reconsideration if you want to. I put that in there because we still do get quite a bit of requests on that, and I think there is a solution to some of the objections that were raised the last time that it failed. So it might be worthy of giving another effort to that. The last strategic consideration I've got is on page four, and that is defining coverage by reference to major roads and intersections. I've detailed the intersection, I mean, the major roads in the county. That's 411 North, 129 Calderwood Highway, Highway 72, which is a very small segment in the southwest part of the county, Highway 321 from Foothills Parkway to Townsend, and Highway 321 Wears Valley Road. Those are the two-lane segments that are arterial. They're all minor arterials. The intersecting roads are given on the following pages, because we were talking about possibly limiting the commercial development to intersecting roads, major intersecting roads. With that in mind, Highway 72 and Highway 321 Wall into Townsend and Highway 321 Wears Valley Road would probably fall out of consideration because they do not have any major collector roads or collector roads intersecting, but they do have some minor roads that might be of interest. So with that, everything else in the memo was just kind of the background and history to give you an idea of where we're coming from and where we might go in the future. I'd like to open this up for discussion and guidance to staff with the goal to come back at a future date with a possible formal presentation for a resolution, for an ordinance, ordinance language.
Okay, the floor is open for comments and discussion.
Commissioner McCallum? I think the major concern I would have about doing anything on two-lane minor, any arterial would be the infrastructure required for traffic to, you know, you're going to wind up a lot of traffic without at least three-laning with left-turn lanes and that type thing causing major traffic problems. And who's going to pay for those? The developer or...
I guess the question would, there's probably not a, there is not sufficient right-of-way to even accomplish the widening and most of that.
If I could address that in part, there are a lot of two-lane roads in the county that have commercial uses and they function fairly well. In Lewisville, we just approved a Dollar General store on two-lane Lewisville Road with the entrance off of two-lane Minner Road, and it should function fairly well. I mean, they showed how the trucks would come in and out and the traffic would come in and out. That does not necessarily require a third lane. It depends on the volume of traffic. If the volume of traffic gets to be sufficient, then you might need to have a third lane, a turn lane, but that's something that can be done by traffic study and by engineering. I don't know that that is something that you need to require and think you need to require in every instance on two-lane roads.
Is that at the roundabout, though?
Yes.
You know, that slows the traffic down for us and stuff like that, though.
Well, it also created some unique traffic patterns that we had to consider, too. But you can look along Topside Road also, which is a two-lane section that has quite a bit of commercial.
This concerned me after the fact, if you've already done something and then you've got traffic problems, you can't deal with them then.
This would have the potential of turning some farmland, minimal taxable land, into some commercial taxable land as well. And that alone, I think, would enhance the revenue for the highway department, maybe to make improvements in some of those roads.
I think you need to discuss with Bill Dunlap where he gets his money. He doesn't get it from the property tax. I mean, I just, factually, you need to, you need to make sure that you understand where the money comes from for road improvements. And these two-lane roads are actually state routes, and like on 411 North, any improvements would probably be a shared situation with the state, the state taking the lead on it.
Any other thoughts or comments? Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question is, if you're, if we're limiting the commercial development to the intersections, in the past, I've seen if we set this one lot at the intersection as a commercial lot, and you're going to skip down to another intersection. To me, that's kind of like spot zoning, however, what is, what is, what is going to happen if, say we do open these corners up for, for commercial development, and then down the road in the future, this lot next to this commercial development decides they want to become a commercial development? In the past, I've seen us, okay, that particular lot, if it's next to a commercial lot, and what's going to happen if the next lot and the next lot and the next lot wants to do that? Then what you're going to do is open up these two-lane roads, and all we're going to see is commercial development on that. What's going to prevent that from happening is my question.
First off, when we talk about intersection of roads and clustering, it doesn't mean the lot that's directly on the corner. It could be a distance away, and that's how you limit the impact. You set that distance away. It might be two or three lots down that you define that distance, and all three of those lots would then be part of a potential cluster.
I understand that, but what happens if three lots on the, down the road decide they, they'd like to become a commercial venture? What's going to prevent, I guess what's going to prevent those from being okayed to put in a commercial? Again, pretty soon you're going to have the whole, a whole line of commercial development along these two-lane roads, and I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure the two-lane roads are going to be able to handle the traffic.
Well, in, in any instance, the regulations could change to expand. I mean, it's up to the county commission to set the standards. Give you an example, on the alternative one, if it's special exception, it would go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. That would not be a rezoning. So you would have to set that criteria of, say, X number of feet away from that major intersection. That's the only land that would be subject to that special exception, and the Board of Zoning Appeals could not legally go beyond that point. Now, when you get to the county commission on alternative two, where you're actually doing a rezoning to a, to a separate zone, legislative bodies sometimes will bind themselves, sometimes they won't. So I'll leave that up to the county commissioners as to the, you know, efficacy of that approach. Mr. French?
Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're talking about lot, medium, and heavy zoning, right, John?
It's called high density, medium, and low density.
So according to what all of... So according to what all I've read and so forth, you start closest to the cities where you might be able to get on the shore. You got a little heavier. As you move on out, you restrict it on down and restrict it on down till you get down to light. And you look at, by reading all the, the whole package, you've got people that can have, have a house, and they can have a wood shop, woodworking shop there that they sell goods to, Townsend or Wallin, wherever. And, and all this stuff can be took into consideration by doing all this stuff. You know, by looking, starting at the city limits and look at their growth boundary, and then start moving, figure out which street, which highways we want to eliminate and ones we want to work with, and start and work with, we've got a good guideline to work with, and see what we come up with, starting at the growth boundaries and, and work our stuff on out till we get, you know, to the county lines on the other end. And it will work if it's, you know, done right.
So if we set the standard, say, 300 feet from the intersection, each, any direction from that intersection, on the minor arterial road only, then that would eliminate Mr. French's concern about, you know, people jumping all down the highway. Then for that to be changed, I mean, if we set it for whatever the, the distance might be that, that seems right, the only way that could be, I mean, the only way that, that could be changed then would be through the commission, correct?
Yes.
So, and then there couldn't be any special exceptions or anything for anybody in between those areas?
Well, that, again, the special exception with special limitations, if you set that as a special limitation, then the Board of Zoning Appeals would be bound by that. They could not legally go beyond it. If it was a rezoning situation where you had an RAC two, let's say, and you had in there as a principle or a purpose that it would be limited to the intersections, the county commission is a legislative body, they can unleash themselves from that and rezon something elsewise. So, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that a quasi-judicial body like the BZA can be bound a little bit tighter than sometimes a county commission or a legislative body. But I, I've learned that through experience. Legislative bodies, if they see something they want, they'll change the regulations in passing and, and get it done.
And we're talking about also re, retail and service type commercial, not, you know, we're not talking about manufacturing or anything that, that would, would generate a, a lot of traffic at one time, such as shift changes and stuff like that. So we're, we're limiting to, we're limiting it to service clustering, ser, and the way I look, what I'm trying to envision that we need is, is more areas in the county, in, closer to communities to service people and to, to limit travel for small necessities. And this is, this to me seems to be the answer for some of that, hopefully. But in order to keep that from becoming something that, that is a traffic problem or a problem, what can we do to, to manage that part of it?
That's where you have to be very careful in what you list as permitted, as uses in either alternative, either as a special exception or permitted uses in a new zone. And that's a discussion that I think you need to do in detail. I can't give you an answer. There is no one answer. There's no expert answer on that, other than sometimes, let's say, a manufacturing operation that has three or four employees is not going to have a rush of, of people out at quitting time, whereas a store that's, you know, a gasoline store with a convenience store might have a rush of employees, having people coming in and out at quitting time everywhere. So you, you know, it's not a matter of what it is, of the manufacturing. The idea of servicing the flow of traffic and the local population is a good concept. I think that if you go in then to campgrounds, you're not doing that, you're talking about something that's a special consideration there. But having a, a cluster at intersections, particularly major intersections, where the local population and the local traffic can be serviced is a good idea. You then need to find out, you need to consider, what are those uses that actually service that type of activity? And things like beauty shops, barber shops, convenience stores, I don't know what else. I mean, you know, you, you need to come up with that list in your own mind.
Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we're talking about industrial parks, they manufacture a product, and it's sent, some of them are state in the state, but most of it is sent somewhere else that they collect the taxes on, because they got tax exempt and so forth. We're looking at things here that will keep this tax in this county. They're small operations, they're not, maybe up to a dollar store, or, you know, that type thing. And that money stays in this county and, and to help our tax base, and that keeps this money off these property taxes. And, and if we can work out the zones, and what can be put there, and have four each way down the highways, you've got intersections that you can say, they will enter off the side road, and they won't enter off the main road unless they get it from the state. They just, a whole bunch of stuff here that can create money for, for the county that we can handle at this planning commission and do it the right way, and, and still not have all the traffic and all the breakdowns that we have. We have the problem with the four lanes. We have problems with the four lanes, the center lanes and, and all that. So you're not going to drive a two-lane highway like you do a four-lane with a center lane and two bikes on each side and so forth. So, but we're looking at entirely different product here than we're looking in 411 South or William Blunt and, and all that type of thing. So I think it, it will work, but it's going, I think it's going to take more than what one time talking about, three times or whatever. It's going to take a lot of planning, and John seemed like he's on top of this thing, heading us in the right direction. Because you take the city of Miraval, Tommy, that, look at some of the two, two, two-lane streets in Miraval, and see how many businesses on them, Montvale, and, you know, on and on and on. And, and that's tax revenue for the city.
Commissioner Roddy?
Thank you. Based on the discussion, it sounds like that, that most of the concerns could be alleviated, and all the positive benefits could be gained with exploring more on, on alternative one, where you, we would set the distance away from the intersection, and the BZA would be bound by that and would not be able to give exceptions to it. And we'd keep it out of the zoning and keep it out of the politics and so forth. And I think it would address what Commissioner French is concerned about. If you can only go 500 feet down the road, that's as far as you could go, or whatever the thing is.
Well, I think the other big item is defining what uses, how do we boil down and, and get, John, do you have any ideas as to how we, how you'd like to see us try to point you in the right direction?
It almost begs for a workshop type of a context or, or situation where we can have a little bit more interaction and just start listing things down. So, you know, you might want to consider a workshop on that, or, or have a workshop within a meeting to where I can interact with you and let you start just listing. I mean, you tell me what to put on that list, and I'll put it on the list. I have, you know, I can give you some pointers based on experience, but every type of business is kind of unique. Sometimes it just depends on how you put it into the, the context of the land itself. Keeping the, the, the access on the minor road instead of on the major road, unless you get a permit from the state. Keeping the, the access that if it's on a major road, a certain distance away from that, that road intersection, so you don't have turning conflicts. Those are the kind of things that you can put into design criteria, but you need to have a, a sense of how, you need to have a sense of the magnitude of the use. And there's several ways you can address that. One is through the use list itself. The other one is just to limit the floor area. There's only so much that you can stuff into 4,000 square feet, or 10,000 square feet, or 6,000 square feet, whatever that is. There's only so much you can stuff into that floor area. So you can set a maximum on that. You can set a minimum on the, the lot size that, that will accommodate that. That way, you'll, you'll have a little spread out, you won't have a density there. And an acre is what we've had in the past. So an acre and a certain, you know, maybe 10,000 square feet, or pick a number. I'm not wedded to that. I'm just saying it might need to be more than 4,000. So setting those will get, give you that control on the intensity of the use, the use itself, whether it's intense or not, and the, the limitations on floor area and, and land area.
Would ever, Mr. French?
I agree with Mr. Lamb. I think it's going to take a workshop to, to work out the details, and I guess it's not like we need to have the workshop next month. We're not in a hurry to do this, I assume. We can, we can set a workshop for next year sometime, after the first of the year to, to work out the details. But I, I think this is something that we, we need to take, take home and read a little further and, and contemplate, and, I mean, we're not in a hurry to do this already, John.
Well, whoever's asking is always in a hurry. It's, it's up to the county to go at its own pace in defining something. The, the idea is to do, do due diligence and do it in a, in a proper order, but come up with something that works for Blunt County. If that takes four months, or three months, or two months, or whatever, just make sure you get that at the end.
I agree.
Commissioner Hodge?
You, you pretty much touched on what I was going to suggest, A, you know, workshop discuss it. Number two, as you mentioned, the total floor. But I'd like to make sure within that, you have a limitation of two businesses that can make up the total of 4,000, or three, or whatever it may be. You, you, you know, I think of going out, Spribeau Road right there, wherever High School Road comes in, that little center there, they developed, or what, four? You know, that's almost an example, possibly, if not maybe a little bit too big, of what we're envisioning on some of these areas around. But, you know, how many in, in that one development, as you may call it?
Let me get some feedback. Do you want to do a workshop in, I'm not setting a date, we won't do it this year. December's already pretty well wiped out. John's got to take vacations, so. Do you want to do a workshop in conjunction with a meeting, or do we want to set, schedule a separate meeting for a workshop? What's your preferences?
January.
It'd be January, February. We can set the workshop date in, say, next month. I mean, at, at their December meeting or whatever.
Well, let's make it January, because December's really just getting caught up.
No, I, we're not going to do it in December.
Good, okay.
But let's plan on a workshop in January.
Separate.
Separate, okay. John, why don't you come back to the meeting next month, look at the calendar, you know who you've had to deal with conflicts on, and let's set a target date for a workshop in January, and we'll firm it up at the December meeting.
Okay. And that will be published. It will be a public meeting. It's not, it's just that we're going to have a different format than a, than a formal meeting.
Commissioner McLeod?
Mr. Chris, when will we, will we have a meeting in December, or will it be the week before?
It looks like we will have something on the agenda, and it will be December 17th.
Seventeenth.
It's the week before.
Yes, everybody got that? It's, that's a Tuesday, I believe.
Yes, Tuesday the 17th, yeah.
I think I already put it in my calendar. So Tuesday the 17th is our next meeting. It will not be our normal Thursday meeting, so.
Why is there a conflict?
John, do you have anything else for the?
Just a moment, there, there, we had it on the calendar for Rhonda, and there just seemed to be no conflict. Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Do you have anything else?
Seventeenth is the plan.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, our regular, our regular meeting will be on the 17th of December, which is really only three weeks away.
Yeah. And we actually published that first of the year, because we knew we were going to have a conflict with Christmas holidays. I really have no, I've, I've talked to individuals about education, everybody, but to have the education hours, and I've talked to them individually, so we're pretty good on that. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving. We are adjourned.